And by the way, Commissioners, we are not actually mic'd so maybe project your voices a little louder than normal, but the audience can hear us over the TV. Okay, anyway, so for each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as rebuttal, so eight minutes, just remember to keep two minutes at the end. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they are representing an organization or a group, and they may have five minutes. First of all, I'd like to make a -- of our intern, Ryan Charles, I'd like to recognize him. I think he's been around for a while and I keep forgetting to do it, so we're doing it first thing on the agenda this time, so thanks for being with us, Ryan. Do you have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carried. Appeals to decision pursuant to the provision of Section 2.680.030 of the Metropolitan Code of laws notices hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via a statutory writ of certiorari. Your advice is seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the historic zoning commission. So first thing is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. And so far, we do have 1610 Cedar Lane that's removed, and two, what is that, 311 West End Place, and that's it.
This month's consent agenda.
We approve minutes already, yeah.
This month's consent agenda includes 1821 Fifth Avenue North, new construction of a detached accessory dwelling unit; 4828 Aberdeen Road, new construction of an addition; 2617 Essex Place, an addition, an outbuilding and setback determination; 1027 Mansfield Street, new construction of an addition with setback determination; 1504 Orway Place, new construction of an addition; 2125 Belmont Boulevard, new construction of an addition; 2213 Belmont Boulevard, an addition; 1403 Elmwood Avenue, a detached accessory dwelling unit; 1405 Elmwood Avenue, a detached accessory dwelling unit; 1210 Orway Place, new construction of a detached accessory dwelling unit; 1702 Ashwood Avenue, an outbuilding and setback determination; 608 Russell Street, an outbuilding with setback determination; 122 South 12th Street, a new construction of an addition and outbuilding with setback determination; 2008 Benjamin Street, a detached accessory dwelling unit; 714 Russell Street, new construction of additions and a detached accessory dwelling unit; 1324 Stratford Avenue, an outbuilding and setback determination; 2119 Westwood Avenue, an addition, outbuilding with setback determination; 3725 Central Avenue, new construction of an addition; and 1322 Sixth Avenue North, new construction of appurtenances. Staff has reviewed the items in the consent agenda and has found that they meet the respective design guidelines and recommends their approval.
Okay, thanks Paul. Any questions to Paul before he steps down? Okay, thanks Paul.
I move to adopt.
Well, let me do open here, public hearing, open public hearing. Would anybody like to speak regarding any of these on consent agenda, seeing no closed public hearing?
I move to adopt consent agenda as presented.
Okay, we have.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. So the first one is 1610 Cedar Lane.
Actually, we're going to start with 311 West End Place.
Okay, 311 West End Place.
My apologies. All right, this is a request to construct an outbuilding that is not a detached accessory dwelling unit, and includes both rear and left side setback determinations. The outbuilding meets the design guidelines for everything except setbacks and eve height. The outbuilding is located at the rear of the lot with parking from the alley. The proposed footprint is 749 square feet. Since the outbuilding exceeds 700 square feet, the base zoning requires that the rear setback be 20 feet, and the side setback be 5 feet. The applicant has requested to reduce the rear and the left side setback both to 3 feet. Staff does recommend approval of both setback determinations, finding that they are appropriate as outbuildings were historically located close to or even on the rear and side property lines. In addition, this structure is not a dadu, so it will not include an additional dwelling unit. And also, while the garage is accessed from the alley, the garage doors will actually face the right property line, so they will not open directly onto the alley. So the overall height of the proposed building is 21 feet with an average eve height of 14 feet 6 inches. Since the outbuilding is an accessory structure, it should be subordinate to the house. As proposed, the outbuilding is two stories, whereas the house is one and a half stories. The outbuilding exceeds the average eve height of the house by 1 feet, 1 foot 3 inches. As an accessory structure stated before, it should be subordinate to the house not only with regard to the footprint and the overall height, but also with regard to eve height. So staff recommends that the average eve height of the outbuilding not exceed that of the historic house. So here we have the elevations, the front, which will face the house, the left side, the alley, and the right side, which will have the garage doors. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the outbuilding and setback determinations with conditions, including the condition that the average eve height of the outbuilding not exceed the average eve height of the historic home.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward and state your, state your name and address?
The red button. Is this on? Can you just talk? Okay. So thank you, we appreciate staff's commentary and review of this. Obviously, the only thing that we have an issue with is the eve height. We would like an additional 1 foot 3 inches of eve height. One of the things, I don't know if the staff has the slide contextual elevation available? The 14 and a half foot eve height, this is probably not the best thing, is in line with the data of the existing house due to site conditions of slope. I'm going to give staff this, which has a line which is conservation. So that is, that is the condition that we base the eve height of the proposed garage structure on, where it's not in excess of the height of the eve of the existing house due to the slope of the grade going toward the rear of the property. That's, that's, we would like to have that. It makes, because of the most slope within the roof, that we are matching the existing house's roof pitches. That makes that, the loft space a little bit more workable. And we also feel it is deferential to the house because of the site, the site.
What do you mean?
You see on the image I passed to you, a line from the eve of the existing house straight across based on grade and everything else. We'd like, we'd appreciate your consideration about that. Certainly be pleased to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions to the applicant at this tone? Okay, thanks a lot. Maybe we can use a rebuttal if you need to at the end, depending on public hearing. Okay, open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing no public hearing. Any questions come up at all?
I guess I do have one question. Reducing that 1 foot, how does that adjust the ceiling height? I guess it would probably be the adjustment at the top floor.
Correct, correct. And we have compressed the garage level as much as we possibly can to get clearances for those garage doors and things like that. It just makes our eve, our eve bearing really tight trying to make a stair work within that footprint. We get, we start banging our heads against it.
Well, but I mean, can you, do you have a height that, with that reduction, would be the upper level ceiling height, floor ceiling height?
It would reduce the upper level floor to ceiling height below 8 feet if we reduced it to 13.
I mean, is it closer to 7 or 7 and a half?
It's right at 8 feet right now. That's, we kind of based all that, looked at where eve, roof, roof eaves were, lined them up, and worked, worked inward from that.
All right, no more questions. Thanks a lot, Ben. Okay, closed public hearing, discussion?
I guess I have reservations on making those exceptions just because these outbuildings become such a, they tend to get bigger, although this is not. I certainly see that the elevation is such that it would be lower, but if we were to pass it, we need to make sure that we've made that exception that we took into consideration the grade within our motion.
I agree, Ben, that the combination of the slope providing some flexibility along with the overall ridge height being relatively low makes it possible to bring the eves up that high. I think they're stretching the very limit of it, but I think they've found as far as it can go, for me, with sort of an exception, not an exception, but as far as we can bend on the relative eve heights versus the main house versus the outbuilding.
Staff, are, I mean, are you comfortable, I mean, is there actually that drop in elevation from front to back since that we could, I mean, it would...
There definitely is a change in elevation. I think our reservation was that while this isn't a dadu, there were some other elements that we were more flexible with, for example, the dormer.
That's proposed. Typically, that would have to be inset from the wall below. In this case, it's a wall dormer, which pretty much says no, but because it's not a dadu, you know, we made an argument for since it's facing the alley and it doesn't have to meet those dadu standards. So I think that was our thinking, well, there are some things that are flexible. In this case, you have a one and a half story house and a two-story dadu with a two-story eve height.
So what you're saying, I mean, is that you all made the concessions where you felt that there were least impact us making an exception?
No, because there's the other issue too. If the grade drops and you make the argument that allows for more height, then what about when the grade rises? Does that then squish a building down?
Well, I think...
So there's that concern, and as you all know, we're, we've been trying to be very, very, very consistent with garages as well as outbuildings, so that applicants know what to expect when they come here, they know what to expect when they're designing. And the concern is that just as soon as we start to open doors, then where, then where are the rules? What are the rules? What are we passing wrong to applicants? How are we helping them design them?
Well, I will say that I think you, taking advantage of a dropping grade, it doesn't necessarily follow that we need to reduce the height foot for foot with an increase in grade. I think we can treat them separately. It can be a one-way street or sort of a different scale depending on a dropping grade or a rise in grade.
I think if the, if the motion were crafted to insert that fact that applies here, that it goes down and therefore the grade goes down from the main house, that is a difference for us, that we are not going to create a precedent here. We carved out a distinction. That's how I see it.
Just, I guess we just have to be careful with that, just as staff brought up, just that we, however we proceed on it, that we just realize that there's been a lot to deal with outbuildings that we deal with, so just guys can consider that.
So even if our commission isn't purview over use, and at this point, it's an outbuilding versus a dadu, and our board has been, you know, we're very strict on how the dadu follows guidelines because of all the efforts and things that the neighbors have gone through. So in past, you know, we've heard of an example where it was a outbuilding at one point and then it became a dadu. So then, it, in the dadu requirements today, it was not in, under requirement, I mean, under, following in saying this, so then if it does become a dadu in the future, then are we setting precedents for that possible use in the future, that it's not following those guidelines?
I don't think that we are setting precedents. I don't think this would be, if we were to approve this, I don't think that that is precedent or allows any sort of argument that a dadu could do this. The dadu has its own much more rigid standard. If somebody decides later that they're going to illegally turn it into a dadu and use it, it's a code's issue and not really ours. I think we should cognizant of that potential, like you're saying, but I don't think a change in use later sets up an argument for someone to say, well, there's this dadu here, because the way we approve it is it's an outbuilding, it's not a dadu. Like, at least for our purposes, it's apples and oranges, at least technically.
I will say that, you know, this issue comes up every month, and we travel with it every month, because everybody wants a little more. And I did do a little research, and for the past six months at least, that's as far back as I had time to look at, you have not strayed, whether it's an outbuilding or a dadu, from those requirements that were, that you agreed you wanted to uphold. And you do have another case coming up later today where the councilman has asked you to stay the course with those requirements. So I just wanted to point that out.
Can you clarify that the requirement in the staff's recommendation for approval with the measurements of average height is, where does that fall out of the guidelines or the direction that the staff and/or that the commission has taken to evaluate these?
I will say that we've always looked at the average eve height and ridge height at all four corners of the existing house to determine, but I think you're asking more than that.
Yeah, and I'm, if you could clarify, I'm a little confused as to what you're looking for.
I think there's, what I'm hearing is that there's some reaching for trying to allow this to happen. If we're going to do that, it needs to reference the guidelines, or if you're not going to, if you want to take a position that you're not going to do it, I think referencing, talking about, is it subordinate or is it not subordinate? Raising, you know, the ridge height makes it one of these things, we're arguing in degrees of what that is as opposed to discussions about setting precedents or other things like that. If it's within the guidelines, you know, it is, or make an argument for that. If it's not, then, or you feel that it is and it has been judged to not be, make an argument for that.
Robin, the six-month look back that you did, are you saying that over those, to make sure I'm understanding the point, are you saying that over that six months, this commission has said regardless of whether it's a dadu or an outbuilding, the use is not relevant? We're treating our guidelines, our interpretation of the guidelines for outbuildings have stuck to the stricter dadu standards, so we're not getting in the middle of what do they do with it?
A few years ago, some of you may remember that we started hearing for neighborhoods quite a bit, really concerned that garages and additions and infill and everything were just getting too big. And so we've received multiple public input about that, at the meetings, outside of the meetings. You've probably met with people after public hearings and heard, you know, concerns, at least that's what I've heard back from you. So then we had a series of charrettes, and one of the things that came out of that was it would be so much easier on the applicants if they were the same, if the regulations for dadus and outbuildings are the same. So you added that as italicized information into the design guidelines, that you would look at them both in the same way. And that is what you have stuck with, I think, since then, but again, I've only had an opportunity to really research the last six months. Does that help? So the guidelines themselves have not changed. That talks about outbuildings being appropriately scaled and masked for the neighborhood, for, you know, in terms of other outbuildings, in terms of how they relate to the historic buildings. And so that italicized information is your evaluation of how you are going to, or information is to how you're going to evaluate that section of the design guidelines.
So let's just, let me just understand this. So the eve height of the proposed garage or outbuilding is how much higher than the primary house?
1 foot 3 inches.
Okay, thank you.
I can reopen public hearing real quick. Did you have a really quick comment, Ben?
So just for the commissioners to know, this property, even though it exists in a historic, a conservation overlay, this, the properties on this street are zoned RS, so a dadu isn't actually possible. That is one reason we don't have a dadu proposed. The other thing is the guidelines, even with the italicized comments, your basic guidelines, say a maximum eve height of 17 and a half feet and a maximum ridge height of 25 feet. Obviously, that does not apply across every situation as this, as this represents. It does ask for the building to be subordinate and massing and so forth to the, to the structure. That is where we stand on this, is that this building, because its eve does not exceed the eve height of the existing structures, which is uphill, it is, and its roof is not higher than the roof of the existing historic structure, not the addition, historic structure, which you can see the addition was added, I guess, I guess five years ago, I can't remember exactly. That's our position. It is, it remains subordinate to the historic structure, and that's where we come from on this. We did work with staff, I mean, our first proposal, our owners wanted 8-foot flat ceilings on the roof, and we have worked between all those things. It's not been something that we've just thrown out and said, this is it.
Okay. While the applicant's up, any more questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks. Closed public hearing. Any more discussion, or do you have a motion?
Just, I'm still on the fence here, but I see the value and the, the ability to be perfectly consistent if we just follow the dadu dimensions and guidelines, because it makes it mechanical. But there's a big part of me that says, that's what codes does, and that's why we have these bad results, because it doesn't take context into, into account. And here, I think, when you look at it on paper, I know I'm looking at it on paper, not on site, but it's very subordinate, and I think meets the spirit of what the guidelines were intending to accomplish. It also, approving it, as Robin, I think, is making a very good point, it opens up a can of worms in a Pandora's box. So I guess it's up to us whether we think we can make those judgment calls, and it's going to make staff's life a lot harder, it's going to mean people are going to push the envelope more. But when I'm looking at this project, it looks good and fine and meets the spirit of the guidelines. So I guess we decide whether we want to keep that door closed or go for what I think might be a more equitable result. That's also a can of worms.
That is. Anyone else have any more comments? Why don't you craft up a motion and let's...
I don't know if I want to open up a can of worms or not.
Well, we could see what the rest of the motion fills.
I'll try very carefully. In lieu of the fact that the, the overall structure is subordinate to, well, in light of the fact that the overall structure is subordinate to the historic home and overall massing, the significant grade change that further reduces the perceived eve height, and the fact that the average, while not perfectly consistent or less than the average eve height of the historic home, it is a very small amount above. I think that in context, it meets the spirit of the guidelines to be subordinate, which is the biggest point to me for outbuildings. I move approval of the, the application.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Good motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Because we got to have at least two. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so motion does not carry. So with that, somebody can craft...
I'll try another motion.
Okay.
Where is the paper, huh? Unfortunately, I didn't get to print this one out. Okay, so with regard to the application at 1610 Cedar Lane, no, I'm sorry, which one am I on?
311 West End.
311 West End.
Oh, on the next page. Sorry. I did not get to print all of these out. It's the, yeah, it's the West End. All right, let's see if I can get going here. With respect to the application regarding 311 West End Place, I move that the application be approved, subject to the conditions set forth by the staff.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. So now are we ready for 1610? Okay, 1610 Cedar Lane.
1610 Cedar Lane is an application for an outbuilding. The agenda was published saying it was an outbuilding and a setback determination, but prior to writing the staff recommendation, we received revised drawings that reduce the footprint of the proposed outbuilding so that it no longer needs a setback determination. So this application is for an outbuilding that meets all the base zoning setbacks. You can see it here on the site, it's at the, the site and questions at the corner of Cedar Lane and Oakland Avenue. The proposed outbuilding, which the applicant is saying will not be used as a dadu, is located behind the historic structure. It will be 3 feet from the rear property line and well over 5 feet from the two other side property lines. The total square footage for the footprint will be 690 square feet. Here is, here are the two elevations. The elevation, oh, let me just go back one moment, the, there is no alley for the site, so the garage will be accessed via an existing curb cut off of Oakland Avenue, the side street, which staff finds to be appropriate. So the facade on the left is the West, or Oakland Avenue facing facade, and the one on the right is the house facing facade. This lot has a fairly substantial slope from, I don't know if I know northeast, but from, like, from Oakland Avenue to the interior of the block, there's a fairly substantial drop in grade. So in this instance, well, I'll just go through and get to this, so this is the Oakland Avenue facing facade. So, if I'm sorry. The eve height in this case will be 16 feet, which is less than the maximum eve height, and the ridge height will be 25 feet. Both of these are subordinate to the historic house. When you get to the interior facade, the eve height and ridge height relative to the grade does increase because of the substantial increase to, because of the substantial slope to the lot. But staff found that because the street facing facade, which will be the most prominent facade, does meet the eve height and the ridge height and is most subordinate to the house, that it met the design guidelines. The materials, the materials will be brick, sorry. I think the material will be lap siding or brick. I might have to, yeah, confirm it. I think, yeah, it'll be brick with asphalt, single, shingle roof, and staff will ask to review all the window choices. to review all the window choices. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the outbuilding with the conditions that staff approve a brick sample, staff approve all window and doors prior to purchasing the installation, and staff approve the shingle color.
All right, thanks. Any questions, Melissa? Okay, thanks, Melissa. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
Diane Pond at two-nine-two-nine Sidco Drive, three-seven-two-zero-four. We worked with staff to make this compliant setbacks. We presented to staff a couple of weeks before the deadline, talked to them about what needed to happen, did that. We are here to answer any questions that you all have, and we appreciate your time.
Any questions for the applicant?
You agree with staff recommendations? Do you agree with staff recommendations?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Open public hearing. Would someone like to speak regarding this project? Yeah, please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is David Tarpley. I live at twenty-eight-fourteen Oakland Avenue. I'm appearing on behalf of myself and my wife, Sarah. I did prepare a presentation. Ms. Blalock has one copy. I have two more I'd like to share, if I could, with members of the commission.
Just give it to Ms. Blalock, and she will...
Did I understand Ms. Blalock correctly that the proposal has been changed so that the footprint is now less than seven hundred feet?
Yes, so now footprint is six hundred and ninety square feet, so...
The only notice we received in writing was the notice saying that the footprint exceeded seven hundred feet, therefore a variance would be required on the setback, which would otherwise be a twenty-foot minimum. I just wanted, stated for the record that we received no notice that there has been a change in that proposed setback. And I'm here to discuss the setback on behalf of myself and my wife. My testimony is granted verbatim on the presentation you have. I'm going to go ahead and read it, please. My name is David Tarpley. My wife Sarah and I have owned and resided at twenty-eight-fourteen Oakland Avenue since nineteen ninety-two. The south side of our property abuts the rear of the Grissom's property. That side of our house is the active side, containing our living room, dining room, kitchen, and den, where most of our day-to-day living occurs. Its windows have the best view, including a view of the green area where my wife loves to feed birds. This side of the house also has the best light. The proposed three-foot setback threatens a tree which may be on the property line. Furthermore, it will reduce light to the area, which could be a factor when we landscape to offset the removal of trees during construction, which, by the way, we plan to do. A setback of ten feet would pose no hardship to the property owners and would alleviate to some extent the loss of enjoyment of our property that a three-foot setback would cause. This is not a situation where there is an alley that would provide a buffer beyond the setback. A ten-foot setback would allow the Grissom's to build their garage studio, and would also allow us to continue to enjoy our side yard. My wife and I requested the commission disapprove the three-foot setback. And with that printed testimony are some exhibits, overhead shots of both residences together, an aerial photo of that side, that is, the south side of our home, showing the windows I've just alluded to, a portion of our survey done in March twenty-twelve, showing as best we could draw it in where the accessory building would be with a three-foot setback, the provisions of the Metro Code outlining the requirements for a variance, and a large tree that may be on the property line, it's impossible to determine for sure right now because of the undergrowth, one taken from the first-floor dining room window and one from our upstairs bedroom window. Again, all of this was prepared based upon the only notice we had, and that was that a variance from the twenty-foot setback to the three-foot would be required for approval by this board. However, I am presenting it for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak regarding this project? Closed public hearing. Could you just...
Could you clarify?
Yeah, would you mind clarifying that again? Thank you.
The setbacks have not changed in the proposal from the initial version that we saw. So the initial version had a footprint that was over seven hundred square feet, and base zoning requires when an outbuilding has a footprint of over seven hundred square feet, that it be pushed twenty feet from the rear property line. So therefore, you, it would need a setback determination. With that version, the applicant sent out notices to all the adjacent property owners, which is typically required when we, when we consider a setback determination. After that was done, we did hear some concerns from neighbors, we spoke to the applicant, and the applicant agreed to reduce the footprint of the structure to less than seven hundred square feet, six hundred and ninety square feet. And in that case, the base zoning setbacks are three feet from the rear property line and, and I think it's like five or twenty from Oakland Avenue, and only three feet from the interior property line. So it's more than meeting the side setbacks, it is also meeting the three-foot rear setback. Now, if it was more than seven hundred square feet in footprint, it would need to be under base zoning, pushed twenty feet from the rear property line, but because it was changed to be less than seven hundred square feet, the three-foot setback does meet the base zoning setbacks.
Okay, so we're not making a setback ruling?
So, yes, so this proposal that's before you right now, and that is the, the version that was in your staff recommendation, does not require setback determination.
Okay.
It just, not that it's going to, I don't think, be dramatic, but the footprint of the outbuilding that changed by, what, ten square feet?
It was a little bit more than...
Basically, it didn't change the dimensions.
No, what happened was originally there was a front porch attached to where the kind of overhang is now, and we count porches as part of the footprint calculation. What the applicant did was remove the porch and put the hood over, and when it doesn't have posts that go to the ground, we don't count it as part of the footprint. So it was a removal of the porch that reduced it to the less than seven hundred square feet. The dimensions, the height, the eve height...
Footprints.
Yeah, pretty, the footprints are pretty much the same as if the porch was removed. And just so, because I know the, the audio isn't necessarily great, so, so because this faces Oakland Avenue, the house on the other side facing Oakland Avenue, I mean, that's, this, the, the rear yard for this house is the side yard for the house, and it's behind it.
All right. Any more questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Discussion, motion?
I mean, it looks to me like the house is in compliance, and we're not granting or in a position to grant any deviation from what the regulations call for. The applicant's not asking for deviation from the regulations. So I would move that in matter of sixteen-ten Cedar Lane, that we approve with staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstaining.
Abstaining, okay. Motion carries with one abstination.
I wanted to say why abstaining, I probably should...
Oh, you don't have to. You don't have to, just, thanks, good, thank you. Okay, so we're ready for four-hundred Broadway? By the way, who's keeping time? Are you still keeping time? Okay.
Four-hundred Broadway is an application to construct a rear and rooftop addition to alter the historic and nonhistoric windows, to alter window openings on the rear facade, and to alter the storefronts. A little bit of background on the building, the building is located at the corner, the northwest corner of Fourth Avenue North and Broadway. The building was originally constructed circa eighteen seventy, although the western portion of the struc, structure, or the left part of the structure, was altered in the mid-to-twentieth century with new window openings and steel windows. Both the eighteen seventies and the mid-twentieth century portions of the building contribute to the historic character of the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. So even though the left portion of the structure was altered, it was altered long ago, long enough ago that we consider it to be a historic alteration and something that is worthy of There are many parts to this project, so I'm going to start with the rooftop addition. The bulk of the addition is setback from the Broadway facade by the required thirty feet and from the Fourth Avenue facade by the required twenty feet. However, a portion of the stair bulkhead encroaches on the thirty-foot setback by approximately eight feet. This stair bulkhead is no taller than five feet and is slanted, so the tallest portion of the bulkhead is further back and therefore less visible. The bulkhead will likely be at most minimally visible, and the staff therefore finds that its encroachment into the setback, to the required setback is appropriate. The design guidelines require that rooftop additions be a maximum of fifteen feet above the parapet wall. This addition will extend thirteen feet above the parapet wall on the Broadway facade, on the image on the left. Because of the parapet wall steps down along the Fourth Avenue facade, a back portion of the parap, a back portion of the addition will be sixteen feet taller than that portion of the parapet. Staff finds this to be appropriate because the majority of the addition will be less than the required fifteen feet, and because a portion of the addition that extends taller because of the lower parapet is pushed to the rear, where it will be less, where it will be less visible. The addition's materials include an aluminum storefront system with fully operational glass wall system, that's also known as a nano-wall system, and the commission has approved this on new construction in the Broadway District in the past. Portions of the addition will be clad in exterior cement composite facade system, and I do have a sample, which I'll pass around along with the brochure. This is not a, a material that we've approved yet so far in the district. Staff finds that it could be appropriate, but we just want more information about how it's going to be hung on the facade. The applicant is proposing to install a railing on the roof. The design guidelines require that railings be setback eight feet from the parapet wall. However, along the Broadway facade, the railing will not extend above the line of the parapet, and therefore it does not need to be recessed eight feet, as is typically required. The applicant has proposed the railing to be set at the parapet, which is, which is appropriate in this instance. So along Broadway, because of the tall parapet, you won't be able to see the railing, it's set entirely below the parapet. Along Fourth Avenue North, the applicant is also proposing not to reset the railing eight feet, as is typically required. On this facade, the parapet drops in height, and therefore, between one and three feet of the railing does extend above the parapet line. For this reason, staff is asking that the railing along the Fourth Avenue facade be setback four feet, which is about, which is less than what is typically required, four feet rather than eight feet, just to reduce its visibility along that facade. The project also involves a rear addition. Again, the rear addition will be clad in a material that's being passed around. You know, staff finds that the rear addition, it's on a rear facade, which is not a historically significant facade, it's offset so that the corner of the historic building remains. So staff finds that the rear addition is appropriate. On this facade, the staff is, the applicant is proposing to install a new window opening, is that window opening there in the middle? Let's see, yeah, so here's, here's a photo of the rear facade and the window opening that's proposed. It also will have a nano-wall system or a folding glass wall system. Again, because this is a nonhistoric facade, you know, and if, there's a parking lot behind it, so currently it's visible, but, you know, in the future, that, that parking lot could be developed and then the visibility would be reduced. For those reasons, staff finds that this new window opening is appropriate. Now on to the storefront alterations. The applicant plans to alter the storefronts on both portions of the building. The storefronts are nonhistoric but date to a nineteen ninety renovation of the structure, and this was prior to the creation of the Broadway Historic Preservation Overlay. So the renovation that was done in nineteen ninety did not come before the Historic Zoning Commission. On the right portion of the building, at the corner of Broadway and Fourth Avenue North, the applicant is retaining most of the architecture of the storefront, keeping the corner entry. The primary change will be replacing the fixed glass in the storefront windows with an operating folding glass wall system, also known as a nano-wall system. The commission has approved operable storefront windows like these on nonhistoric storefronts in the past, and staff therefore, therefore finds it to be appropriate. And just quickly, here's the Fourth Avenue storefront facade. There will be a separation between the left and the right storefronts, since historically these were two separate buildings with separate storefronts. On the left portion of the building, the applicant intends to remove the entire storefront and rebuild a new storefront. The storefront will have a similar design to the storefront to the right, but will be simpler in design to match the mid-century design of the building. The entry will be located, the entry to the building will be relocated from the center to the left side of the storefront. It will be recessed. Storefront windows will also be fully operational folding glass wall system. Staff finds all of these changes to the storefront to be appropriate because, again, the storefront is not historic, it was constructed in nineteen ninety. You can see on the drawing that the applicant is proposing quite a few gooseneck lamps at the storefront. In total, ten gooseneck lamps are proposed for the Broadway facade, one is proposed for the corner, and seven more are proposed for the Fourth Avenue North facade. There are a total of eighteen gooseneck lamps proposed for this storefront. The design guidelines state, quote, "If lighting, if lighting is installed, it should be concealed or simple and, and as unobtrusive in nature in, in design materials in relationship to other facade and elevation elements." Although the commission has approved gooseneck lighting for signage in the past, staff finds that the number of light fixtures does not meet the design guidelines because it is, quote, "not simple or unobtrusive." Late last week, after the staff recommendations were published, we did get some more materials from the architects to further explain their lighting plan. The gooseneck lamps are proposed to shine straight down to the sidewalk rather than inward towards the building. Under the storefront cornice, the exposed, exposed bulbs are planned to run continuously along the storefront, shining down to illuminate the sidewalk. Also, a continuous line of lights are proposed for the top of the cornice, shining up. While spotlighting that highlights architectural features of a historic building can be appropriate, a continuous line of lights that create a glow above the cornice is not. And just quickly, here's a snapshot of our design guideline page for lighting, and you can see it shows specifically a gooseneck lamp, and it states that the inward direction of the light is appropriate, so it kind of shows what an appropriate gooseneck light should look like. And it also, you know, talks about that lighting should be concealed, simple and unobtrusive, light should be directed towards the facade rather than outwards, and that spotlighting can be appropriate, but visible fluorescent bulbs are not. Sorry, lost my place here. Okay, so in order to meet the design guidelines, staff recommends that one gooseneck lamp be installed per storefront bay, which will reduce the total number of lamps to eight. So I just kind of showed with X's kind of generally what we mean. So for each bay, there'd be one light. Obviously, they could move those around slightly, but that was kind of a general idea of what we were thinking in terms of appropriate number of lights. Staff also recommends that the downward exposed bulbs underneath the storefront corner be disapproved, and the upward-facing lights only highlight architectural features. So for instance, you know, just lighting kind of in between the window bays would be something that would be an appropriate amount of facade lighting. Similarly, on the rooftop addition, there's quite a bit of lighting that is proposed. So staff recommends for the rooftop addition, again, that only one gooseneck lamp be installed per storefront bay, which will reduce the total number of lamps on the rooftop addition to eight. Staff also recommends that the downward exposed bulbs underneath this, wait a minute, applicants can probably explain better, it wasn't clear from what they submitted whether or not they're proposing kind of those other downward light bulbs and the upward lighting on the rooftop addition as well, but, you know, again, it would be similar to what we recommend for the storefront, that the lighting, you know, be minimal in light architectural So now on to the proposed alterations to the windows. So on the left part of the facade, the multi-light steel windows are historic, and they do date to the mid-twentieth century. You know, although they're not the original windows here, staff finds that they have acquired a significance of their own and are considered to be a contributing element to the historic building. In nineteen ninety, during the renovation, the steel frames of the windows were restored and new glass was putting, new glazing was put in, so the, the frames are historic, the glazing has been replaced. The applicant is proposing to retain the existing steel frames and to re-glaze the historic windows. Historically, steel windows like this one would have been fixed along the edges and would have had a center, central hopper window that could swing in... would have had a center, central hopper window that could swing in or out, and you can kind of see the outline of those in the photo. Rather than restoring this historic operation, the applicant is proposing to retrofit the frames so that the entire window becomes an awning window. The windows would swing out horizontally to be perpendicular to the building facade when fully open, and you can see that in the drawing on the left, that when it's fully opened, it would be perpendicular to the facade. When fully open, the window would extend about four feet eight inches beyond the building facade, completely changing the look of the building. Staff finds a proposed alteration to the window operation to be inappropriate. The operation of a window is intrinsically linked to its design and to the, to the historic building's design and to the overall look of a building. Retrofitting a historic window to operate as an awning window could require a change to the window frame or opening that would not be appropriate. Even if the window frames or openings are not altered, changing the operation of the window to be an awning window would inappropriately change the look of the upper stories of the facade. Now on to the other, to the windows on the right and Fourth Avenue part of the facade. The double-hung windows on the Fourth Avenue North facade and the right portion of the Broadway facade are not historic. They were installed during the 1990 renovation of the building, but the historic photograph seems to indicate that, you know, you think you can fairly clearly see that the, historically there were double-hung windows in these window openings. Similarly to what's planned for the windows next door, the applicant is proposing to replace the nonhistoric windows, and although, you know, staff would be supportive of replacing the nonhistoric windows with double-hung windows, what they're proposing are to, to install new windows or even retrofit the existing windows so that, again, they become those awning windows that swing out to be fully horizontal or perpendicular to the building facade. You know, again, as I stated with the other windows, the operation of a window is intrinsically linked to its, to the historic building's design and to the overall look of a building. Windows are an important part of a historic building's character, and installing windows that do not replicate the typical historic windows of the period does not meet the design guidelines. So staff finds that either new windows that swing out like this or taking the existing windows and retrofitting them to swing out horizontally does not meet the design guidelines. The applicant also provided a drawing of another option that they would be willing to consider, which would be a quadruple-hung window. Just want to say again, you know, staff finds that that does not meet the design guidelines because historically the windows that were here were double-hung windows, so. And this is a photograph that the applicant submitted of what, you know, what they were thinking the windows would look like and how they would operate. And staff just notes, you know, I think this photograph shows it fairly clearly that when you're looking at this building from the, from the street, from Broadway or Fourth Avenue, changing those windows to open like that would make a dramatic difference in the appearance of the structure. So staff recommends, let's go back to the windows, that the commission require that the new windows on Fourth Avenue North and remain as double-hung windows and not operate as an awning window. We also recommend that the historic steel windows remain fixed, and, you know, should the applicant want to restore the central hopper operation, we would be fully supportive of that. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the project with several conditions, including, one, the number of gooseneck lamps on the ground floor be reduced to have just one lamp per storefront bay, and that the lamps on the rooftop addition be reduced to two on the Broadway facade and three on the Fourth Avenue facade. Two, the applicant not have a continuous line of uplights but rather have select number of uplights that highlight architectural features of the historic building. Three, the lights under the storefront cornice be removed. Four, the replacement windows for the Fourth Avenue North facade and the eastern or right portion of the Broadway facade be double-hung windows with a traditional framing system and offset overlapping sashes. And staff review the final window selection prior to purchase and installation. Five, the historic steel windows remain fixed and the central hopper element be restored if the applicant wishes to have the window open in any way. Six, staff review the proposed installation method, proposed installation method for the facade material for the additions. And finally, seven, the railing be recessed to four feet from the Fourth Avenue facade. With these conditions, staff finds that the proposed addition and alterations meet Sections two and three of the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay Design Guidelines.
Thank you, Melissa. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
Can we ask questions before we?
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Jumped over that. Excuse me, applicant, yeah, questions?
Just one question, are there, are there other of those awning windows? I don't remember seeing those before, are there?
We have never approved them before.
Okay, we've never approved those before, and they're not?
Not even on new construction, we haven't approved them.
And they're not found in the district historically?
They're not found in the historic district. Whether or not they're found other places downtown, I don't know, but I have, I'm not aware of it. But I know we have not approved them and that they're not existing in our historic districts.
Not on Broadway.
Not on Broadway, not on Second Avenue.
I just wanted to clarify, state number two again, what's the recommendation on number two? Has it changed from what's on the?
It has, yes, it did change from what's written in your staff recommendation because we subsequently received more information. So, I mean, once we received information on the lighting, staff thought that the continuous line of uplights didn't meet the design guidelines, so we wanted a select number of uplights. You know, typically if you're seeing uplights, they're kind of lining architectural features, so they'll be, for instance, like in between the, the window bays kind of, you know, particularly for the building on Fourth and Broadway, highlighting the architectural brickwork, that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Melissa, we had a case not too long ago where there was a desire to shift, what at the time I believe was a historic entry, and so I wanted to clarify that, in staff's opinion, moving of this entry, because it's nonhistoric, is not moving away from compliance or there's not any question there in terms of staff's evaluation that it's?
In this instance, we, because we actually have the drawings from 1990, so we saw that they, we know for certain that the existing storefront dates from 1990, so we thought that changing the storefront, because it's not a historic storefront right now, would be appropriate.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Any more questions? Okay, thanks. Now, open public hearing with the applicant's status, name, and address, and your case.
Josh Hughes, 410 Elm Street, Nashville. Hi, folks, I'm with Duckin Architects for planning our client today. First, I'd just like to thank you for your service and the role you play in protecting the character of Broadway and other historic areas. Real quickly, I'll mention, I am, I do serve my community as chair of the Historic Zoning Commission, granted on a much smaller scale, but in Owensville, Tennessee, so I do understand the tough, tough role and the positions you're put in, sitting on that side of the table. So with that said, I'll do my best to put you in a tough position today, and just for the sake of getting everything out there, I'm going to kind of jump back and forth between some scripted information and talking about the drawings.
Do you mind speaking up, so this end can hear you better, at least I can?
Okay. So first, I'd like to convey that our client is fully committed to investing in the renovation and upgrades of the building in ways that will embrace and exhibit its historic character. They've also expressed their strong desire to contribute to the character of the building, to Broadway in a respectful, tasteful manner, which in the same authentic way we accomplished on a previous project, Acme Feidancy. In past conversations, we've referred to that project many times in our design discussions and aim to achieve some of the same result. Much of the beauty of the building's existing structure that is covered up or has been covered up in previous renovations, we plan to restore and put on display. Significant investments also need to be made to make the existing floor structure viable in supporting their increased occupancy type, again, all in a way that will be minimally invasive to the existing floor structure. In addition, these considerations, given these considerations, we are challenged with a much smaller footprint than the majority of other multi-story establishments on Broadway. These all represent not just architectural challenges, but also obstacles to our client in creating a viable and thriving business, given all these investments they need to make in the building. I think many would agree that this building was previously underutilized, and much of that's due to the challenges I'm mentioning here. If we could go to the site plan on what's been submitted, I'd just like to just give a visual of all this. Our building has a 3,200 square foot footprint, as opposed to?
I have a roof plan, I don't have a site plan, but I'll show the footprint, so.
Well, just for context, this takes up half of the block. Ryman Alley is to the north of this, virtually every other multi-story venue on Broadway is twice as deep. And so we are having to put as much infrastructure into the building, you know, two stair towers, an elevator, kitchen, all types of mechanical support space in this small footprint. You can see when we get up to the rooftop, complying with the setbacks for the building, the vertical structure, we're only left with about 1,200 square feet of interior space, and just about half of it's taken up with vertical circulation and core elements. So granted, we are complying there. And in addition, it's hard to see without looking at the demo plans, but this building has been renovated multiple times in the past, and it's just been cut open and pieced back together over and over, and again, we're trying to bring it back to its somewhat original state, granted that it's unsure of what the original state was on some parts of it. So we, over the past couple of months, we've worked with staff and I think had a good dialogue. We're more or less arguing over three or four issues, and, you know, last month or a month and a half ago, it was probably closer to ten, so we're doing better. And I'd like to say, as I get into each issue, I don't mean any disrespect to the opinions that have been expressed by the staff, but just that we feel that what we're proposing is not in conflict with what the guidelines say, and in most respects is, in, provides for the intent of what it was established for. So regarding the rooftop setback, looking at this, these drawings of Fourth Avenue and the rooftop, you can see that obviously, again, going back to the footprint issue, we start with a major disadvantage to other multi-story entertainment venues on Broadway, given that they have twice as much square footage to accommodate the setback and deal with core infrastructure. We're making great efforts completely replacing and lowering the existing roof structure so that at Broadway, we can be at the 42-inch parapet height. Again, this allows us to take our terrace out to Broadway, but at the same time, you know, represents a significant investment. As you can see, as was pointed out by staff, the parapet does step down along Fourth Avenue. It steps, you know, to three different levels. But I would argue that if, in other structures that have added rooftops, they've added on top of the existing roof, and if we had used that solution, granted we would be held back eight feet, but it would have raised our rooftop structure up much higher than where it is. We would have a lower ceiling height at the rooftop, but our railing would be much higher, and I would argue that it would be much more visible at the back end of the building, being five or six feet taller than, well, the floor would be five or six feet taller than the top of the parapet at the back corner of the building. So other considerations, I mean, we're willing to explore other materials for that guardrail element, whether it's adding brick, although that may not be appropriate, using ultra-clear low glare glass with no visible hardware. And I would like to point out that the first, you know, the first bay, first quarter, no guardrail is visible, so it doesn't seem like, you know, setbacks should be established there, and even working down, there's lesser visibility towards the Broadway side than the alley side. Moving on to the window discussion, in some ways, it's the same discussion for both the wood windows and the steel windows, in that we are, we're fully committed to maintaining the existing look of the windows from the exterior and to maintaining their structural integrity in solutions that we are proposing. We submitted info from the window contractor related to constructability in effort to legitimize and establish our level of confidence in not needing to deviate from the current opening size or aesthetic. Guidelines require that replacements replicate originals, and we are proposing that the look be 100% replicated or maintained in both cases. Our only request is to modify the operation so that the units pivot open as a complete leaf, and in the case of the steel windows, we would propose to completely restore them, re-glaze them. And any modification we make, we would also commit to limiting it to the interior side so that in the event of a future occupant wanting to reestablish its fixed operation, they could, they could do that if they so choose. I know I'm starting to run low on time, a couple minutes, I believe. So in our opinion, this is no different than what you're accepting down on the storefront, a window that looks like a storefront window but operates differently. We've proposed many other alternatives for the windows, the triple-hung, quad-hung, but we understand the intent is you want the windows to look exactly the same as they do now, just there's, you know, 95% of the time they will, except when the weather is nice enough to open them up. We're willing to discuss the other several items with staff, and we think we can come to consensus on those.
Since time is there, real quick, are there any of the conditions that you are okay with, or did you?
We are fine working with staff on lighting.
Okay.
And the cladding material.
Okay. So it's the railing setback that you spoke of and the windows, which are?
Yes.
Three different ones, okay.
Yes.
Any questions right now to the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Oh, and I do have one, which wasn't, it may have been shared with you, the contractor's proposal basically on the, on the windows, as far as, just to legitimize that they're confident they can, they can do it, and it's just not our?
Just give it to him, let's, let her look at it. Okay, thank you. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? State your name and address. Just come to the front.
Dirk Spentley, 2300 Charlotte. Just to reiterate, Josh, it's been fun for me to see what you guys do, I love Lord Broadway, love Nashville, got my start playing all these bars down here. I was the first guy to play the stage. I played for a lot of tips and a lot of bars in Lord Broadway and back in the late 90s. And I used to walk into this Gruen Guitar Shop, this building, and look at these great guitars, which I couldn't afford, pull them off the top wall and play a little bit, and set them back up on the wall. I love this building, and I've been really fortunate to go from the honky-tonks to getting a record deal and playing country music and be successful enough to, you know, put my name on this particular building. I know George. I know George Gruen, I love this building, and I want to keep the integrity of this building. I love the way it looks, I love the way this windows looks, I love the way it's two buildings kind of ran together to one. It's got these funky windows on one side, and these archtop windows on the other, and definitely want to maintain that look, and want to chose to work with these guys. Yeah, I know we could replicate the same look, but also kind of keep up with what's going on downtown on Lower Broadway. It's a very, as you guys know, there's a lot of people coming to town, a lot of folks coming to Nashville, and they're looking for, you know, country music and our heritage, and we have Roberts, we got Tootsie's, we got all these great honky-tonks that I love to still go to, but what we're trying to do here is keep something that has that country vibe, that country culture, but in a way that is kind of like Acme, but a little more country. And we want to take this building and keep it, keep that look that it's always had, which I love personally, but also add an element to mix of fun. People come and get some air, and, you know, hang out, and I think it'll be a pretty significant role in the future of the country music and that presence on Lower Broadway. There really isn't something like that down there right now, there's honky-tonks, but something that just kind of has a little more of that modern feel, and I think what they're proposing with the windows does reflect just keeping that heritage, that look, that feel, but also making it usable for a very few parts of the year. I mean, sorry, that's me, time's up. Majority of the other things would be closed, you know, Nashville's, we got pollen, cold, and whatnot, but for certain times, it'd be nice to kick those open, get a little more air in the building, so. I'm proud to have this place. Thanks for letting me talk to you all, and I've really enjoyed the process of watching what you do.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing.
One other item on the windows that I didn't...
Well, let's see how, if we have any more questions for you, and bring it back open. All right, discussion?
I guess I do have one question about the windows, which, is there a safety or...
I'll open public hearing, and you can ask him a question. Come on, come on.
Is there a safety or functional reason that you want the windows to be different? My understanding is they can all be operational the way that the staff has put the conditions on it. So there's safety or other functional reason that you need the windows to be different?
The hopper elements in those steel windows, we would have trouble finding a way to convert them into, I mean, obviously, they operate, but, you know, they hinge kind of at the halfway point of the opening, and that's kind of right at chin level. I don't see there being a real viable public usability there with making those operable. Again, likely going back with single-pane glass in those when we re-glaze them, you know, we can make it tempered and it'll probably be safe, but it just, it could represent a head knocker, the whole, it's not above the six-foot-eight code clearance. The double-hung windows, there's no safety concerns, a lot of it is driven by their desire and need to get, to get customers up on the second floor, create a visibility. I didn't mention this, but the second floor is the primary area proposed, I mean, that's the most important area they'd like to get open, and that's because it's elevated off the floor, they want to make sure people from the street see that there is activity up there, and they want to draw people past the first floor up to that level.
Any more questions to the applicant?
We are willing to mock up these windows as part of this to show that we can get them to maintain the existing look.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
So on these current double-hung, so you would change it to an awning window?
It would, it would still be a, it would be a double-hung looking window, still have one sash in front of the other, but they would be fixed together, so you'd still have, it's in some of, a little bit of the documents there.
You can actually replicate that to be an awning window, is what you're presenting?
Yes, yeah, I mean, it's a true pivot window, so, you know, two-thirds of it would open out, or, I mean, it would pivot, one-third would be inside the building, two-thirds would be out. But yes, we've talked through the hardware on it, and have a great deal of confidence that we can keep the look and add that functionality.
And your intent in having open window is to bring that essence of the Broadway opening...
So many of the establishments down on Broadway, whether it's an infill building or, you know, modifications that were made before you guys have that functionality as part of their business, and they're also much larger buildings, and so, part of that is that you get, if you can open the windows more, the space feels bigger, it's just 3,200 square feet, half of it's taken up with core, and the space feels tight, and to make it viable, open the inside out, make sure people know stuff's going on up there.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, thanks. Closed public hearing. Any more discussion?
Well, it sounds like the lighting issue, they're in agreement on staff's recommendations there, so that's one element, multifaceted element.
I guess the things, yeah, the things we want to talk about is the railing setback and the windows, yeah, and the two windows.
On the Broadway side, both of them?
Yeah.
I think it's important, I understand the need and the desire to have those windows open from a business standpoint, it makes complete sense. Though I feel like we have told countless other applicants in the recent past, they can't change fixed windows to open. And so if we did that, we'd be making a big change, and a permanent change on that, and have a lot of angry people. And I think it's important that these awning windows are, we haven't approved those before, so that'd be a big one, too. I don't have a good middle ground or solution to that, because I think the need is real and meaningful, but I don't feel like we've made that exception for anybody else. The railing, it doesn't seem like a huge ask to have it setback, and if it reduces the visibility a great deal from Fourth, Fourth is a busy street, too, especially with the property being on the corner, that doesn't seem like a big ask to me.
The applicant, I'm not in disagreement with you, the applicant, I think, made a point that...
Oh, up towards the front? Yeah, maybe it could step in, that would make sense, that they wouldn't, they shouldn't lose, at the very front, they shouldn't lose that four feet.
And if we're basing our judgment primarily on the visibility of the railing...
That's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, in my mind, the question is, is the top, at the step downs, the front one seems not visible at all, so it's equivalent, in my mind, to the Broadway facade, I don't see it necessarily there. Question is, if the second one with the narrower street, is that visible just peeking over the top? Could, you know, could half of it be setback from the second step down? Would that be acceptable, or do you just want to say, oh, it's completely invisible? It seems a judgment call, I'm hard as to if that is the judge of setback and need for that. I don't know what your thoughts on that, in terms of visibility, but I'm agreeing with you that all, the entire setback is not necessarily warranted across the whole Fourth Avenue renovation.
Do I understand right from staff that the requirement is for it to be eight feet back, and you've said that it can be four feet back on that Fourth Avenue side?
Do you have any, Sarah, about the windows?
You know, when I read through this beforehand, and I went and looked at the property and read the staff report, and have heard this presentation and all the discussion, I think the staff's really done a pretty outstanding job of trying to accommodate and say, gosh, you know, the stairwell intrusion is not really salient, and so they think they've worked really well to try to accommodate these needs. I don't see compelling need with the windows, I wasn't convinced that there's a compelling safety or functional need for this. When I looked through the materials here, a lot of the windows that they're proposing are a much stockier and more robust framework, which would change the look of either set of those windows. And so, I do think keeping the look of the windows, and both of them, all of them can be functional as it is.
While inventive, I don't, historically, I think there's a little too much room there for it. It operates in a completely different manner, even if it's only 10% of the time. Double-hung windows will close the sash up, and there you go, this is a completely different, completely different use, and I'm agreeing with your view.
What about you guys?
I agree with that, with, what's his name down there? I can't remember it, for some reason. Ben. I wasn't here, I wasn't here the last...
I made that good of an impression.
I wasn't here last month, so I can't remember any of you. I believe that as well, I think that's a very good point about the difference. It's just a completely different window, and we're getting out of the historical context with the awning window. So I'm persuaded by that argument.
And the other whatever to that persuaded, is that we've not approved that at all on Broadway, so again, we're setting some precedence on that issue.
Any other guardrail discussion, setback, anything else?
Sure, I think I see your point in that it was eight, it's four, just given their smaller footprint, I think if we're using the visibility as, in my opinion, if we're using visibility as the determinant, it's not the only determining factor there, but for the first bay, I'm not, if you can't see it, I'd be giving them that four about 20-foot back to as usable space, seems...
Just remember, we have to speak up, too, I'm sorry, just because...
Doesn't seem like an unreasonable component to give them that, what amounts, I guess, on Broadway to very valuable real estate at a rooftop back, I certainly wouldn't have an issue with that one, even though the staff has gone some distance to give some of that real estate back in their proposal of four feet along that facade.
Is it true, I heard the staff write that there is no setback requirement for the handrail where the parapet is along Broadway, where it's at four and a half feet?
That's correct, yeah, we're saying it's okay not to be setback, because it's completely hidden behind the parapet.
Well, want to craft a motion?
Sure, I recommend approval of 400 Broadway in the Broadway Historic Preservation Zone in Overly District, with the staff's recommendations of items, three, well, one through six, with the understanding, I think the applicant's going to come back to staff with some lighting, new lighting information that would meet those guidelines. With respect to item six, I would, because, in areas where the application or shows that the railing would be hidden, and I'm speaking specifically on the first bay, as it turns from Broadway to Fourth Avenue, where it would be hidden, that it doesn't need to be setback where it's completely hidden by the parapet, but it would be setback four feet in other areas.
Okay, have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? The next one is 1825 Fourth Avenue North.
1825 Fourth Avenue North is an application for a one-and-a-half-story addition to a one-story house. The historic house was constructed circa 1925, and it is a contributing structure to the Salem Town Conservation Overlay. If this house looks familiar to you, it may be because in April of 2015, the commission reviewed and approved an addition to this house. That addition was never constructed, and the applicant has returned with a larger addition for this proposal. Staff is recommending disapproval of this application, finding that the addition's scale is too large for the modest historic house. The application does involve demolishing an existing covered porch at the rear, which staff finds to be appropriate. Here is the front elevation. The addition will be slightly taller than the existing house, it'll be about four to six inches taller than the historic house, which staff finds to be appropriate, because it's, you know, located far enough back that it won't really be visible. Here is the site plan. The addition will convert the single-family house to a duplex, with one unit in the front and another unit in the rear. MHCC does not regulate use, but it does regulate the height, scale, and design of additions to ensure that they do not overwhelm the historic house. The proposed addition will more than double the footprint of the existing house. The current footprint, including the rear porch that will be demolished, is 1,170 square feet. The addition will add 1,442 square feet of footprint to the house. The addition's depth is 54 feet compared to the historic's house depth, which is less than 44 feet, and again, those calculations do take into consideration that there's part of the house that's going to be removed, so we calculate it, and also in using the calculations, we, for the footprint, we included the front porch, which is open in nature. The design guidelines state, quote, "No matter its use, an addition should not be larger than the existing house, not including the nonhistoric additions, in order to achieve compatibility and scale. This will allow for the retention of small and medium-sized homes in the neighborhood. The diversity of housing types and size is a character-defining feature of historic districts." In the past, MHCC has interpreted this part of the design guidelines by requiring that additions no more than double the footprint of the historic house. Here's a close-up of the floor plans. The green portion to the right is the existing footprint, again, that's including the porch that's going to be removed at the rear, and then the blue portion to the left is the part of the addition beyond the line of the rear-covered porch that's to be demolished. And it looks like in the, in the blue portion, that there's just, oh, it's just a covered porch in the rear, but if you look at the design guidelines, I'm sorry, if you look at the side elevations, that side porch actually has a second story built on top of it, so we include that in the footprint calculations. So the addition's out-of-scale footprint is compounded by the fact that the addition is slightly taller than the historic house, and has a one-and-a-half-story form attached to a true one-story historic house. The footprint height and one-and-a-half-story form together create an addition that is too large for the historic house. Staff therefore finds that the proposed addition's scale does not meet sections 3B and 4B of the design guidelines. Staff also notes that the addition does not include corner boards, as is typically required. In addition, the siding reveal is shown as matching the existing nonhistoric wide siding, and staff would typically recommend that that siding be a maximum of five inches. In addition, there is an expanse of 30 feet, six inches of space without a window or door opening, which is more than double what is typically permitted. The issues of the corner boards, the window expanses, the siding reveal, those are all things that staff felt that, you know, if the addition were smaller, we could work out with the applicant, but the real reason that we're recommending disapproval is because of the size of the addition. So, here is the rear facade, and here are some renderings that were submitted by the In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the addition, finding that it scales too large for the historic house, and that the cladding material, lack of corner boards, and fenestration patterns do not meet the design guidelines. Staff finds that the proposed addition does not meet the following sections of the Salem Town Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay Design Guidelines: Sections 3B for massing, 3D for materials, 3G for proportion and rhythm of openings, 4B for additions massing, and 4G that states that an addition should follow the design guidelines for new construction. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for staff? Okay, thanks, Melissa. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address? Staff here, okay, all right. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing. Discussion or motion?
You know, in reviewing this project with the materials that were sent out at a time with the application, driving by the property, you know, I think it's a perfect example of what our charge is, is to really adhere to the guidelines that were adopted by the neighborhood, and I recommend for disapproval.
There we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carries. 3609 Catherine Street.
You guys tired of me yet?
Not yet.
You're not losing your voice.
3609 Catherine Street is an application to construct infill on a vacant lot. Here is the site plan. Until recently, the lot on Catherine Street was part of the lot at 1132A McChesney Avenue. On the image on screen, the red portion to the left is the lot at 3609 Catherine, and the portion, the portion in green on the right is the shortened lot at 1132A McChesney. The new lot is 75 feet wide along Catherine Street and 100 feet deep. The new infill meets all base zoning setbacks. A few recommendations that the staff has regarding the site plan. Staff recommends that the driveway to the left of the house be extended to the rear. Currently stops about the midpoint of the house. Staff also recommends that a walkway be added from the street to the front porch of the house. Here is the front facade. The infill will be one and a half stories with a maximum height of 25 feet. Staff finds that this does meet the historic context. Staff asks that the front porch columns have caps. It's a typical requirement. We also asked that it wasn't, the base material for the columns wasn't indicated in the plans. We just asked to review that material. And if it's brick, we'll want to see a brick sample. Staff also recommends that the front dormer windows be paired together to have a four to six inch molyne in between them, and that the front entrance have trim boards around it. Here are the side elevations. On the right elevation, staff asks that the pair of windows either be framed together with a four to six inch molyne in between the windows or be spaced further apart. Staff also recommends that the applicant provide more information on the dimensions of material of the side deck. And actually, since I wrote this presentation, the applicant did say that there was a deck, kind of where the windows that are highlighted are, there's a deck there and that's a recessed area. The deck's not going to extend any further than the two bays to the side, and it will be wood, which staff finds to be appropriate. Here's the rear facade. All the known materials have been approved by the commission in the past and includes a smooth five-inch cement fiberboard siding, board and battened concrete block foundation, I think that's split face concrete block foundation, and asphalt single roof. Staff recommends approval of all windows and doors and the shingle color prior to purchase and installation. And just here are some context photos. The, this photo right here, these two photos are the house that faces McChesney on the other side of the lot. That's the front facade at the top. On the bottom, there's a two-story, nonhistoric addition appendage to the, to the house, and that's what you're seeing there. And these are some other photographs. The top two, I think, are along McChesney, and the bottom one is Howard Street, which is kind of the street just to the south of this. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the infill with the following conditions. Staff approve the finished floor height to make sure it's consistent with the historic context. Staff approve the window choices, the roof shingle colors, that column caps be added to the front porch. The, staff approve the porch column base material, the driveway be extended to the rear of the house, and we approve the driveway material. A walkway be added from the street to the front porch, and staff approve the walkway material. The pair of windows on the front dormer on the right side elevations be paired together with a four to six inch molyne, or be pushed further apart so that there are two separate window openings. Trim boards be added around, around the front entrance, and then finally, staff approve the HVAC locations. With that, I think the applicant is here if you have questions for him.
Any more questions for staff?
One, is the left side elevation visible from the street?
Yes, I'll show you the site. It probably will be.
The, like, this is probably a constructability issue, but the corner board sort of engages with the window trim on that little central. On the one hand, I doubt it could be constructed like that, and on the other, I think we, it needs a little breathing room there maybe perhaps. I don't, I don't think you can get a window in that corner in that fashion, but I could be wrong. I could be proven wrong. But nevertheless, I think it's a little confusing to have the corner board and the window trim sort of smashed up together. I didn't know if that was a particular design issue. I, that was not phrased as a question.
No, no, yeah. I mean, it's, you know, I think, yeah, if it's a constructability issue, I'll let the applicant handle it. I mean, I think, you know, even as design, it will be visible, but it's not going to be a predominant feature when you see it from the street. So, staff didn't have an issue with it in terms of a, a look of it.
All right. Any more questions? Thanks, Melissa. Open public hearing. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
Jason Quorum.
Oh, you better get to, go right to the mic. Sorry.
Jason Quorum, 1619 Holly Street, East Nashville. I'm fine with all the conditions. I guess the only minor thing was having the sidewalk to the street. We've built houses, or renovated houses around the corner, and that there's no sidewalk and the sidewalk just kind of leads out, and then there's like 10 feet to the road, and the sidewalk just ends into grass, and it looks funny. So, what I've done in the past was not include that portion and just connect it to the driveway or whatever. And it seems to make sense instead of having just driveways that lead nowhere and looks kind of funny as you drive down the street. That's it, basically. And I guess I had, I was trying to make the driveway not go back as far, but I was under, I didn't quite understand how far they wanted me to go back. Probably fine with going back to where they went, or where they want us to go.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Do you want to ask your window question?
No. I think with the window trim, you're kind of jamming that window right in the corner. I think once they put the, build the jam for the window, that'll be a tough one to pull off on the outside, so.
Yeah. Of course, it's meant to tend to be a corner window.
So, is there one around the other corner as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's recessed, but.
Gotcha.
But if it doesn't construct, I mean.
If you've pulled it off before, then all right.
It might have to move in a little bit, but, yeah.
Or anything else before Jason? Okay. All right, thank you. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Discussion?
Move to Doc, staff recommendation for 3609 Catherine.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Okay. Motion carries. 2119 Westwood Avenue. No, I'm sorry. I pulled the wrong page. Thank you for the moan. 1415 McKinney Avenue.
Caught me off guard there. All right. So, this is for 1415 McKinney Avenue. It is a request to demolish an existing non-contributing outbuilding and to construct a new outbuilding. And the request does include a rear setback determination. The outbuilding meets the design guidelines for everything except setbacks and footprint. Staff recommends approval of the proposed demolition of the existing outbuilding, as the sandborne maps do illustrate that it is non-contributing, as it was not there historically. The proposed outbuilding is located to the rear of the lot with parking from the alley. Since the lot is less than 10,000 square feet, the maximum footprint for an outbuilding on this lot is limited to 750 square feet. The proposed footprint is 820 square feet. So, the outbuilding exceeds the footprint by 70 square feet. So, while the proposed outbuilding is, it's not a detached accessory dwelling unit and doesn't have to meet those DADU standards, staff finds that the overage is, is pretty significant and recommends a condition that the footprint of the outbuilding be reduced so that it does not exceed that maximum of 750 square feet. And that's to ensure that it's appropriately scaled for the site. So, since the footprint does exceed 700 square feet, I think Melissa brought this up with the previous case, the base zoning requires a 20-foot setback, and the applicant has requested to reduce that to six feet. Staff recommends approval of that setback determination, finding it to be appropriate as outbuildings are located historically closer to, closer to or even on the rear property line. The overall height of the outbuilding is 25 feet with an average eve height of 12 feet, both of which meet the design guidelines and are subordinate to the historic house. So, here we see the front and the left side, the right, and garage doors facing the alley. So, in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the demolition as well as the outbuilding and setback determination with conditions, including that the footprint not exceeds 750 square feet.
Right. Any questions for staff?
Just a quick question, Melissa. On that 750, you're talking the six-foot setback, and that's an if it's 750 square foot, if that requirement is met?
Well, the threshold is 700, so if, if you approve it with that condition that it be taken down to 750, it would apply. And if you decide that what they're proposing is appropriate and approve it at 820, it would apply as well. So, either way, it would need a setback determination.
And the six-foot, but you're approving, but the staff is approving the six-foot setback?
Yes, we are recommending approval.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions, right? Okay. Open public hearing. Applicant like to state your name and address?
Hi. Is this on or?
Not really.
Okay. All right. I'm not yelling at you. I'm just reading fast and loud.
Okay.
It is for the recording.
Okay. All right, good. The reduced setbacks is pretty normal for garages and outbuildings in UZO. There was several approved today with reduced setbacks. I don't believe that's the issue. My client is asking for this approval. Respectfully, my client is asking that the garage be submitted based on the accessory building floor area control set forth in the Metro Code Section 17.12.050. They are making, the staff is making a lot of comparisons that this is a DADU. It is not a DADU. The building can be 750 square feet or 50% of the building coverage of the principal dwelling. That's from the accessory building floor area controls. DADU is short for detached accessory dwelling unit. This is a very restrictive ordinance because of the use. They wanted to keep it small because of people living in it. The definition of it, again, dwelling unit. DADU is an outbuilding, but an outbuilding could be something else or not be a DADU. It could be a garage, garden, shed, studio, but no one can legally live in it in these building types. There's an issue here with the staff enforcing the DADU ordinance or requirements on all outbuildings in historic overlays, which would be changing base zoning and changing the original historic guidelines without going through the proper procedure set forth by our metro government in section 17.40.050 of the Metro Codes. Robin has stated today and in emails to me that the guidelines have not changed, and this garage would have been proved no problem prior to this DADU being voted in. If the neighborhood would like to legally change or add it to the historic guidelines, they have the right to do so through this process. The historic guidelines belong to the neighborhoods and not to the metro government. The staff has added or inserted DADU language in the italicized text of the section of the guidelines. I believe this is legal because the DADU ordinance went through the proper channels of approval with the city's residents and council members. However, with the insertion of the DADU requirements in the guidelines, the staff also added two other words after the DADU or outbuildings. This is, to me, not legal because you're changing base zoning and it didn't go through the proper procedure. I live in, I have property in historic overlay. I was never notified of any public hearings, public debate, council meetings, or anything. This added italicized text in the guideline isn't part of the original guidelines, like I've stated, but went through its own due process. My understanding of the italicized text in the guidelines is for clarification, guidance, and interpretation based on my emails I got from staff during this application. During this application, I asked many questions and found out there was one meeting about garage and outbuildings per Robin. And that was around July 7th that I found that out. I, while attending these meetings, I'd heard Robin state many times to you guys who are trying to understand all this, that there were lots of community meetings and this is what people wanted. So, I thought to myself, I guess there were a lot of community meetings about garages and DADUs, and I just didn't know, and I didn't know that some things had changed. But I found out differently. There was one garage and outbuilding meeting, community meeting, 13 people attended, 13 people attended people. Three to five of those people are really hardcore complainers, which they have a right to. People have a right to complain and voice their opinion about any of this, as we are here today doing. I was, there's 10 staff members roughly from the metro side. It says 10. There's nine of you guys, and then 13 people attended this meeting. And it seems like a very small group of people decided to add that or outbuildings to the guidelines, which changes base zoning. It changes the footprint. You are changing what people can do to their property. It's not an interpretation, a guidance, or a clarification. Now, Brett has submitted a letter today here, and just a couple of things. The fourth paragraph, he's talking about an infill structure, which has nothing to do with a garage or outbuilding. Paragraph five, he's stating basically all of the guidelines that refer to DADUs, but he's calling it the present guidelines for outbuildings limits their footprint. I don't believe that's to be true, and it's not been voted in. If Eastwood would like to do that, I would support them all the way. I would support them changing anything they wanted to or add to the guidelines. I believe it's kind of been slipped in, and most homeowners don't realize it. And if the guidelines haven't changed, then this garage should be approved as is, and there's no difference to the one that was actually approved today, except for, let's see, 1324 Stratton Avenue is a, hold on here, 820 square foot garage or outbuilding. And the difference is that the lot is over 1,000 square feet, and this lot for my client is under 1,000 square feet. So, that's my case, is basically you're trying to enforce DADU regulations on outbuildings, and the DADU regulation is so strict because of the use, because people were concerned about having little houses built in their, in their backyard. Only reason it was architecturally restrictive, and I doubt that actually the homeowners wrote those guidelines for the DADU. Someone else did that, so. Anyway, that's all I have, and I'll bother them for any questions.
First, Lynn, would you mind just stating, just for the record, your name and address?
Oh, yes. I'm Lynn Taylor, and I'm a residential designer representing the client, and I actually live in the Shelby Hills area.
Any questions? Or are they, Lynn?
I have something to say. I just wanted to clarify one of your concerns on changing the design guidelines. There is a duty for them to provide notice if the design guidelines were changed, but the design guidelines have not been changed. I believe you're talking about some of this italicized portion. The italicized portion is there for by clarification on the design guidelines. If the design guidelines were changed, notice would be sent out.
Yes, I agree. And I did say that the italicized section, as I always understand, that's been told to me that they're there for clarification, guidance, and, three words I used here, so.
But the design guidelines, you've mentioned that those were changed.
Well, if you all are going to enforce base zoning changes of a DADU ordinance that had to go through the process, Metro's process, I mean, you understand there's a process to get an ordinance passed.
Yes, I am.
And ordinance changes base zoning, correct? Typically? It did here in the DADU. And that is a dwelling unit, and the reason it is so constrained is because of the use, dwelling unit, a house, is my understanding of that ordinance.
I just wanted to clarify that the design guidelines have not changed.
I know, I've been told that.
Yes.
I've said that. But if you're going to enforce it, it means something's changed. I didn't get a notice that I couldn't build a bigger garage or whatever. As many people, there was actually one person here, I think, that said that today. They hadn't been informed.
Okay. Any more questions to the applicant? Okay. Thanks, Lynn. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Closed public hearing. Discussion?
What does base zoning allow?
Base zoning allows for a 700 square foot building or 50% of the existing structure, whichever is greater, but of course, you follow your design guidelines, not base zoning.
Understood. And in her square footage, is that 820 above or beyond the 50%?
It's one square foot less.
One square foot less? To write at the point.
I would like to add that I did a little more research on outbuildings because this comes up every single month. And of course, the design guidelines that haven't changed talk about outbuildings being appropriate for our historic neighborhoods in terms of the historic buildings they're associated with, in terms of the overall district itself and other outbuildings. So, thinking of a maximum of a 700 square foot outbuilding, that is 204% larger than the average historic outbuilding. And then thinking of 25 feet, which is the maximum, according to the italicized. And then thinking of twenty-five feet, which is the maximum, according to the italicized information, that's sixty-six percent taller. Now certainly, an outbuilding today has got to be bigger than historic outbuildings because they're not big enough for today's cars. But when you sat down after receiving so much public input in multiple public hearings, individually, and in terms of those charrettes, you had agreed because one of the recommendations was, actually I think it was Ms. Taylor who recommended, that they be the same, that it's easier. And it made sense to me and it made sense to all of you when you had your meeting that was noticed. This is what you agreed to.
Any other comments?
Robin, is it, the reason the outbuilding on Stratford was slightly larger than what you're recommending approval for here? That was because the lot was substantially larger as well?
I'm sorry, it was a question? I can't.
On consent agenda today, there was a now building on Stratford that I think had a bigger footprint, but that was because the lot was bigger than ten thousand square feet.
I'm not real sure.
Yes, that was a lot of ten thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet.
Which allows for a thousand square feet.
I think it was pretty clear early on, maybe it was the first or second case, maybe it was the first today, that nobody else is really interested in peeking into Pandora's box with me on this to try to see what we can do with outbuildings. That's fine, I think that's probably the right thing to do. And that we have interpreted the guidelines to mean that in terms of scale, height, footprints, that the DADU ordinance is a good benchmark. And we've been following and that's how we've interpreted the guidelines. We haven't changed the guidelines, but that's how we've interpreted them. And the guidelines override the base zoning. And we've already stretched, as Robin made the point, we've stretched outbuildings already to be much larger than they were historically because of practical concerns. And now we're being asked to stretch them some more. And I think it's pretty clear that the commission wants to draw this line, at least for now. And in order to be consistent, I think staff recommendation makes sense and especially with the number of outbuildings and the pressure to make them bigger, I think consistency is really important. So I think staff made the right call following the precedent and for us to not follow that now, especially in light of the first decision today, would be clearly inconsistent. So that's my, also on that, I'll make a motion unless anyone else has something to say.
Just one other, and just listening to what the applicant has commented as well, is that because the lot size is under ten thousand, she understands that that seven hundred and fifty guideline is there. So I just want to acknowledge that, that she, you know, the applicant acknowledged it.
Yeah, and the lot size is relevant to context, again tying it back to the guidelines. It's, we're using, we've set these dimensions and they're fairly rigid, but they're not out of thin air. It's meant to provide, it recognizes context and, but it's also meant to provide something that can be administered consistently.
Yeah, I think that's a really important word, is consistency, uniformity. And I think that's very important.
Any more discussion? Do you, anybody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion.
I would like to, I have a few minutes of my ten.
Chair.
Oh, actually, it was at the end of public hearing.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But some things you said were wrong. The thousand square foot lot is part of the DADU. It's not part of the original guidelines. It's part of the DADU.
Ten thousand, not ten thousand.
Okay. You were making a motion?
Yes, sir. If we're all ready.
Do you mind repeating?
Are we ready?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I make a motion on fourteen fifteen McKinney Avenue to approve per staff recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Left it hanging there. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Nine sixteen Montrose Avenue.
Nine sixteen Montrose Avenue is an application for new construction of a two-family residence and outbuilding and demolition of this non-contributing structure built in nineteen eighty-five. The new building is proposed at two stories and a maximum height of thirty-three feet six inches. Nearby contributing buildings are up to thirty-four feet tall, so staff found that the height is compatible with the context. The widest contributing buildings on this block face are as wide as forty-one feet for one-story homes. The tallest buildings are not that wide. For example, the nearest contributing building to the subject property shown in the street view in the middle of this is thirty-two feet in width. The neighboring home across the street, you'll see pictures of that later, there's also one at the top of this, is a two-story building that is a total of forty-two feet at the widest. But staff's review was that that width is not the bulk of the building. It's in a couple of parts that are kind of staggered, and I'll show you that next. You can see sort of marked in the middle, the, it's been a porch added on to on the left shot there. I forgot I did that. And then that's the other side over there is an addition that probably would not have been recommended. It's a not original or a contributing part of that, that home that goes wider. The side and rear elevations. The location, the new structure will be centered on the lot. As you see here, the side and rear setbacks meet the base setback requirements. The front setback is at thirty-eight feet and eight inches. Staff estimated the nearest contributing building, nine twenty, on this block as being thirty-two feet from the front property line and has recommended that this new building match that setback with a site plan showing that structure, the historic building, to verify the setback. This is the proposed outbuilding, one-story garage with two bays that meets the design guidelines. Context photos down the street. That's a non-contributing building about four or five years old in the foreground. That's nine nineteen Montrose across the street. In summary, staff recommends approval of this application with the following conditions, that the width is reduced to thirty-six feet. The front setback matched that of the contributing structure at nine twenty Montrose Avenue to be verified with a revised site plan. That staff verify the finished floor height. Have approval of the roof color, windows, doors, and other materials. And that HVAC and other utilities are located for minimal visibility from the street. With these conditions, staff finds that the proposal meets the design guidelines for the Waverly Belmont Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. And the applicant is here as well.
Any questions for staff?
So the reduction in width, can you tell me again the guideline that applies to that?
The guideline is to be compatible with the context. The range of widths, Mr. Root will discuss in some depth, I know he wants to talk about that. The range on this block face of the street is up to thirty-seven feet for two-story homes. It does get wider for one story. Therefore, it was staff's recommendation that this would be more of a compatible building at a more narrow width overall.
I can add that that specific design guideline is rhythm of spacing. And the way we've always approached that is looking at the widths, because all the lots are, you know, similar in size. So if we look at the widths of the building, that assures that rhythm of spacing.
All right, thanks Paul. Open public hearing, would applicant state your name and address?
Hi, good afternoon, my name is John Root, seven fifty-three Alockway Street, I'm the architect for the project. I wanted to, very importantly, I wanted to show you these pictures. This is actually the same design that we're presenting to you today. It's been built at seventeen twenty-seven Fourth Avenue North with a sister house right next to it at seventeen twenty-nine. So the house that we're duplicating is the one on the top left corner. And this is previously approved by this board, I think it was a year and a half ago, in Salem Town, which, you know, one could argue that larger homes exist in the Waverly Belmont District than Salem Town. You know, I think we agree with staff's recommendation except for the width of the home. You know, taking three feet off the home is a significant hardship for us to do that with a duplex. And, you know, staff pointed out correctly that the home across the street that's forty-two feet is not in the bulk width of the home. But I was also arguing that this design doesn't have forty feet in the bulk of the home either. Actually, the gable that protrudes out is twenty-six foot eight. And we have a huge wraparound porch that wraps around that. So the mass of the structure is actually set back eighteen feet four inches from the front of the porch. So we went into this discussion back a year and a half ago when we talked about this design. And I think at that time, we all agreed that the massing was done in a way that it was compatible with the neighborhood. And being in the Waverly Belmont District, I would say, you know, we did some research for you. All the red, the green is the subject property and all the red around us is all homes over thirty-seven feet in width. So there's a large amount of larger homes just on this, on the street. And so we, the first sheet, if I'm, did you, were you able to capture all the? Yeah, so we've recorded all, this is all from the property tax data. There's a couple forty-ones in there, there's a forty-four, and there's a forty-two directly across the street, as previously noted, thirty-nines. So there's absolutely a precedent for larger width homes in the neighborhood. And those are mostly not duplexes, those are single-family homes. The next sheet over, of course, is the, is the forty-two foot width home right across the street that we, that is our direct context. Being two and a half stories tall, like what we're proposing, having a wraparound porch on one side of the house, the actual face of that home is actually wider than what we are proposing across the street. So this is, this is wider at the front gable there. We've got several examples, we can go through them all if you wish, but, you know, we tried to find legitimate examples of two-story wide homes in the context of smaller homes around them, you know. And I think Waverly Belmont is a very good district that you can, you can pick out a lot of examples of this home. So I guess we would, we would assert that and please request the board to approve the width as submitted.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Open public hearing. Would you like to state your name and address?
I'm William Smallman and I am the owner of the property. Live at fifteen twelve Paris Avenue. One thing I wanted to point out, goes very well with what John was saying, but I actually did the median of the block face of the nine hundred block of Montrose on the north side, which is where I am, the median of contributing homes only. So I took out non-contributing, is forty-one feet. So we are actually below the median of the block face. Thought that would help to, yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any rebuttal? No, okay. Closed public hearing. Discussion?
Nine nineteen Montrose across the street is, seems like compelling example to me. So what was staff's thinking in not finding guidance in the forty-one feet there?
I think primarily, sir, it's that the bulk of this home is not as much as, as what's proposed here. Although the overall width, I'll go back to it. At those points, yes, adds up to forty-two feet.
Oh, because the wraparound porch, you're saying that mass?
Yes, sir, that enclosed portion and the addition on the right, that width is the total width that we're, that we're talking about. Whereas this, you know, that's thirty-nine feet four inches for a big portion. You know, the front, the, between the porches, I think is twenty-eight feet and change, is that right? So that certainly would, you know, it decreases the perceived kind of massing of the house, but that overall width, our review was that it could stand to be reduced, given that it's a two-story home.
Can we see the, I think the applicant provided a photograph of the ads constructed in another district that I just?
In Salem Town, yes, sir.
The perceived mass on that from the street is helpful. I think the fact that the thirty-nine feet being pushed back and also on the second story being set in to, what is it, thirty feet roughly, really does reduce the massing a lot. I'm interested to hear what other people think, but I'm inclined to split the baby a little bit more with something like thirty-eight feet, given the width of a number of other houses in the immediate area, recognizing that the one-story examples are less relevant. But there still are a number of large houses around there and I don't think, especially the way it's designed with the wrap front porch reducing the massing, I don't think it's generally incompatible. I think we're, we could get pretty close to what they want and be in the guidelines.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I don't think, just looking at the homes that were featured, that this house that's being proposed by the applicant is, is out of the historic context of the neighborhood. You've got different looks and different, well, we don't, this is the neighborhood. But I think what I'm trying to say is that it's still within the historic context of the overall neighborhood. So I don't think it's really, I wouldn't disagree with this.
In that slide, you know, rhythm and spacing is, you know, you've got two, two really prob, in terms of value that these houses on the other side bring. It wouldn't surprise me if those two houses get replaced, but that's really neither here nor there. If you have a, you know, a block of similarly scaled houses as designed, I think would certainly, with ten feet between them, would not be an inappropriate rhythm or spacing. And I'm in agreement with that.
I think it's kind of consistent with the rhythm and spacing is what I'm really trying to say. It's, it's within the historic context of this neighborhood.
Okay. It will be missing a couple of teeth on either side, but with this one, you know, in the middle, it certainly moves more towards a consistent, historic rhythm and spacing.
Anybody else? Sure, or motion?
Chairman, I will abstain.
You'll abstain?
Yes, sir.
Motion, anyone, or any more discussion?
Let me get back up here. If someone disagrees, I'd like to hear them talk about it, but it seems like people are mostly in agreement that they get staff's recommendation up here so I can, unless you got it, go for it.
One didn't, one didn't, I'm not moving that fast.
The question for me is whether it should be thirty-nine four or something a little less. And we're getting down to splitting hairs, but I thought thirty-six was probably overly restrictive. Thirty-eight sounds about right, but I also don't think thirty-nine's out of whack either. So if anybody's got some strong opinions, one way or the other, I'll give it a shot. Make a motion to recommend approval based on staff's? Make a motion to recommend approval based on staff's recommendation, with the exception that in point one, we don't require that the building's width be reduced, but instead the maximum width be 39'4", provided that the facade and the wraparound porch and all of those elements that, that help reduce the massing stay in place.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
All opposed.
And one abstention. Motion carries. Before we move to the next one, I know we've had a couple of bathroom breaks, does anybody else, we've been going at for a couple hours.
When the break, it was a necessity. It took off. Noah's Fountain House break.
Any more? Anybody else need one? You guys okay? You okay, Cyril, Ben? All right, we'll plow on then. 2803 Oakland Avenue.
Sorry, I'll get my notes ready here. 2803 Oakland Avenue, this is an application to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit at the rear of the lot. The house was built 2009 to 2010. It was approved by this commission, and it received a preservation award for infill from the MHC in 2011. And the proposed outbuilding will be one and a half stories tall with a cross-gabled roof, very much similar to the character and form of the principal building, same cross-gabled roof, same materials, very similar overall character. As I said, the new building will be one and a half story with a cross-gabled roof. It does require a setback determination to be located five feet from the rear property line. The building is under 700 square feet, but the standard setback is 10 feet, they're requesting five, which is typical for the location of historic outbuildings. Staff finds that setback appropriate. The setbacks are, side setbacks are also appropriate and require no determination. There are the side elevations. The stairs on the DDU are enclosed within a screen wall, not within the interior of the building proper. Staff asks that the applicant ensure that the stairs are fire-rated to ensure, to the satisfaction of building codes and the fire marshal. There's the floor plan and roof plan. Staff recommends approval of the detached accessory dwelling unit with the following conditions: that staff shall approve the window and door selections prior to purchase and installation, that staff shall receive a restrictive covenant for the dwelling prior to issuing a permit, and that the stairs are enclosed and fire-rated. With those conditions, staff finds that the detached accessory dwelling unit meets the DDU ordinance and applicable sections of the design guidelines for this neighborhood.
Thanks, Sean. Any more questions for Sean?
Have we, my sense is that we typically are maybe always required that the stairs be enclosed, is that right?
It is a requirement of the DDU ordinance that stairs be enclosed, so.
We couldn't even deviate from that if we wanted to, right?
Right, we couldn't deviate. Now, these are within a screen wall.
I spoke with the fire department, and they said it would not meet their requirements.
There you go.
To have it exposed?
To have just a screen wall and have the roof project out. So it's covered by the roof, and it's visually covered with a screen wall, but it's not enclosed in a manner that meets their fire code, if that makes sense.
It does not meet the fire.
It does not.
Yeah, I think in the recommendation, staff is kind of, they're driving the bus in terms of meeting, reading the guideline, that if you can get it through permit review, then you're good to go, based on the elevations presented today. Is that reasonable?
Well, except that they're asking you for this, and, and you wouldn't want to approve it if it's not going to meet the code.
All right, any more questions for Sean?
The applicant is here. I'm just going to stay up here just because we don't have the remote.
Good idea.
But the applicant is here as well.
You have to do your Tom keeper, too, though.
Multitask.
Okay, open public hearing with applicant, like to state, state your name and address, please.
My name's Bill Johnson, 2803 Oakland Avenue, owner and architect. And we agree with all of staff recommendations. About this stair, I'm not aware of the fire marshal's recommendation, actually, so I don't know if that's a, something that we have on record that we can review to attempt to reconcile, or was that just horrible?
There's nothing to review, other than that's what's in the code, and I asked if it would meet, and I, and I got the answer no.
Right, okay. Did he quote a portion of the code, or what?
Yeah.
Section of the code that he was referencing?
Yeah, I'm going to pull up, do you have the staff recommendation of this? Can you get that back from the other end?
I don't have.
So, let's see. Detached accessory dwelling units with a second-story dwelling unit shall enclose the stairs interior to the structure and properly fire-rate them for applicable life safety standards found in the code additions adopted by Metro Government.
Okay, so.
716-030, okay, Metro.
Perfect, thank you. Our intention would be simply meet the code.
So you agree with all staff recommendations? Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
I don't, well, once we close the stair, it's still within the.
The footprint is around 600 or 650 or so, whatever actually shows on that.
Good, good.
It was labeled. And that includes the stair screen, so enclosing it would not change the setbacks or anything like that.
Thanks. Open to the public, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing the unclosed public hearing, you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Can I have a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You want to go ahead and move it?
I'll cut my back to you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, well, we have a motion.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, second, discussion?
Yes, just with that conversation about the fire rating and how it's, according to the fire marshal, does that need to be stated on your recommendation?
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 1710 Shelby Avenue.
I'm handing this one over to our intern, Ryan Jarls, who you met earlier in the meeting. Need a lot of take it from here.
All right. This is 1710 Shelby Avenue, and the application is for the construction of infill on a vacant lot. The lot is being divided from a double lot with a contributing house located on that side. The building will be a one and one-half story house with a front gabled roof with a recessed front porch. Both sides of the roof will have shed dormers. The dormers sit back from the first story wall nearly three feet, which is typical of the dormers historically in that area. The height and width and the materials of the new house are compatible with surrounding historic houses, and the overall form and character is appropriate for the neighborhood. The building is deeper front to back than a typical historic house, however, the right elevation, oh, the right elevation is articulated with the porch and the recess section of the wall, which helps to break up the length. And this is just a 3D rendering of that side as well. The left elevation does not have a break, as the right side does, so the staff recommends that some articulation be added, because the house sits at the left setback, so moving the house over to the right would require a bump out or some other thing to the left. And so that's the left. So in summary, staff recommends approval of the application with the following conditions: that the finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic houses, and to be verified by MHCC staff in the field; to the house be moved to the right three feet; the two frontmost windows on the left side elevation to be at least as tall as they are wide or square. As you can see in that picture, they're long rectangular. The location of the parking areas via the rear to be added to the side plan. Staff approval of the final details, dimensions, materials of windows, doors, walkway, and driveway prior to purchase and installation. Staff approves the roof color, dimensions, and texture, and the HVAC be located behind the house or either side beyond the midpoint of the house. With these conditions, staff finds that the infill meets the design guidelines for new construction in the edgefield historic preservation zoning overlay. And I also like to add, the applicant has already agreed to all the conditions and has started making the revisions.
Great. Any questions for Ryan?
Curious, just curiosity, what was the move three foot?
On the left side, since it's so long, if they were to move it over, they could add like a bump out to make it less.
Did you just say that, and I just didn't hear it? I'm sorry, thank you. Okay.
Thanks, Ryan. Is the applicant here, would you like to come forward and state your, even though you said that you, just state your name and address and for the record.
David Baird, applicant and architect, 5411 Centennial Boulevard. We agree with all the staff's recommendations. We've been working with them the past couple of days to, to make those revisions and have, have submitted them as of yesterday. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Open public hearing, anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing the unclosed public hearing, you have a motion?
Move to per staff recommendation of 1710 Shelby.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 1404 Lilian Street.
Our battery's dying, so we gotta, gotta move on. So this next case, 1404 Lilian Street. The applicant was here, but they seem to have stepped out. She thought she'd be back, but she's not.
Do you want to take bait first, just to give her a chance?
If that's all right, okay.
Okay, sure. So we'll, we'll go to 1003 Bait, just in case the applicant gets back.
Oh, I have the, the battery's about to die on the container.
All right, so 1003 Bait Avenue, this is a request to construct a new single-family home and detached garage. The house is, oh, sorry, the house located, I'll go back to what was shown here, the house located on the, on the site is non-contributing, as it was built in 1969, and a demolition permit was issued in April of this year, and I went by there, the house has been torn down. So the plan for the infill, that's before you, meets the design guidelines for height, scale, setbacks, rhythm of spacing, materials, roof form, orientation, and rhythm and proportion of openings. As proposed, the infill's oriented toward Bait Avenue with parking off the alley. The structure is one and a half stories with a maximum of 27'10", and an eve height of 11 feet at the front. The historic context in the immediate area ranges from 17 feet to 28 feet, and includes primarily one and one-half story homes. So there's the front, and the left side elevation, the right side elevation, and the rear. The detached garage has a footprint of 528 square feet and an overall height of 22'1", with an average eve height of 11 feet. The outbuilding meets the design guidelines with minimum, and the minimum setbacks per the zoning code. There you have, and there you can see it in relation on the right side to the house, and on the left side to the house. And then finally, we have some context photos. The top-left photo is the contributing house directly across the street, and the other two photos are on the same side of the street as 1003 Bait, but kind of further down to the right. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the infill and outbuilding, finding that they are, that they do meet the design guidelines, and that recommendation does include conditions that are set forth in the staff recommendation.
Any questions for staff?
The distance from, do we have an appropriate distance from the back of the house to the garage? I know we've focused on that in the past.
Right.
Or we've asked that question of applicants in the past.
Right, well, for a, for a DDU, it's typically 10 feet. I think it's been reduced to as little as eight to 10 feet. In this case, it cannot be a DDU, it's detached garage.
So, is the, is that just a rendering, the scallop look on the porch rack? Is that a rendering thing, or are we doing sort of an arch?
No, I think those are shadows, but the applicant can, can speak, speak to that as well.
All right, thanks, staff. The applicant would like to come forward, state your name and address.
Sandy Adams, 513 Windsor Drive. I'm the applicant for Bait, and I have agreed with the recommendations from staff. Those are arched beams on the front of the porch.
Okay. Any questions for staff? I mean, I'm sorry, to the applicant?
So that would be, it'd be built as a rectangular rack and then just have a, a beam sort of trim that makes the arch, or is it a?
It's an actual arched.
It's an actual arch?
Yes.
Okay. All right, if no questions, thank you very much. Open public hearing. If, if you would like to say anything? Closed public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Clarification for staff is, I know we've sort of been picky, but consistency, consistency reigns. Have we had comment on brick versus concrete steps in the past? These are called out as brick, and would that be something we'd need to? Is this district different in some way?
That's a good catch, they really should be a concrete or wood. And in reference to the scallops, that is something you see historically around town. Is the applicant willing to change the steps to concrete?
So you want to just make a motion and add that in there?
You know, I don't have the, the recommendation in front of me, so I, I'm happy to do so.
Just because of the, your catch, you get credit for it.
You deserve it. Thanks so much. Get appearance, my, my prize is appearance in next month's minutes, thanks, thank you. 1003 Bait Avenue, so I move approval for the application for said address in the Waverly Belmont Hillsborough Conservation Overlay District with staff recommendations and the additional condition that the stairs, or the steps to the front porch called out as brick and concrete be changed to, or confirmed that there will be concrete steps.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so 1404 Lilian.
Will return to this one. The applicant has not returned yet, but the applicant, or the recommendations favorable, hopefully they'll be all right with this proceeding. It is an application to demolish an existing house and construct a new house on the lot. The existing house bears resemblance to a craftsman bungalow, which is, of course, a common house, historic house type in the neighborhood, but this was actually constructed circa 1950, and this front porch is added, giving it the craftsman look. It is not a contributing structure in the Lakeland Springs neighborhood, and demolition meets the design guidelines. The proposed new house will be one and a half stories. The proposed new house will be one and a half stories and will also have a form and character very similar to a craftsman bungalow. The side gabled roof, the projecting full with porch, square columns are all typical craftsman features. The height and width and materials of the new house are compatible with surrounding historic houses, and the overall form and character, as I said, is very appropriate for the neighborhood. One, a few things to point out, but one being that the siding is shown with a six-inch reveal. Typically, historic houses don't have siding wider than five inches, so staff recommends that the siding have a reveal of five inches or less, as that's typical of the historic houses. As you see, there's also a front gabled dormer. That dormer is originally proposed sitting with the front stacked or aligned directly over the primary front wall of the first story below. Typically, dormers on historic houses are set back from the primary wall, so staff recommends or would recommend that that is also stepped back two feet. I'll just sum up now quite simply, like I said. Staff recommends approval of the proposed demolition of a non-contributing house and constructing a new one, new one and one-half story house with the following conditions: That the porch floors shall be consistent with adjacent houses to be verified during construction. That the front setback for the infill shall be the average of the adjacent buildings to be verified on site prior to construction. That the siding exposure shall not exceed five inches, and that the roof color, windows, and doors selections are approved by staff. That the front dormer is set back two feet from the wall below. And also that the driveway on the right side of the house shall not be shortened. Currently, it extends to the back of the house. We just want to make sure that that condition remains. And that the proportion and rhythm of windows shall be typical of historic buildings with no large expanses. That would be by adding two- sorry, by increasing the size of two windows on the left side of the house. To my knowledge, the applicant agrees to all of those conditions. But they're not here.
Alright.
I can answer any additional questions in case they don't return.
I have a question about underneath the porch. It says brick or lattice. Have we approved lattice before?
Underneath the porch, yes. It's maybe more common of Victorian houses to have that, but you occasionally- sometimes porches don't have a continuous- do not have a continuous foundation, and lattice can be used there.
That wouldn't be unusual from what we've done in the past?
No, I don't believe so.
The foundation that says smooth stucco finish or brick, assuming OPT is optional or option. Would we approve a brick foundation, I guess on a house of this style, that would be appropriate or not so much?
Typically, as long as there's a change in materials, that's the main- one of the main things that we look for in a foundation. I think, you know, certainly parched is appropriate, and brick is not common on brick houses for a foundation, but for on a wood frame house, it may be appropriate.
There's a- on the side elevation, I don't know if I'm just not reading it on the front. It didn't look like the little bump for the stairs is depicted on the front elevation. And they're showing a rail that kind of- or maybe it is. No, the deadline is there.
It's deceptive, but I think it is. It is there.
We talked about this in drives through approved projects in the past, and I can think on a bungalow, it's especially critical, the width of, you know, the column base width. Sometimes people short, they come up a little short on the width of the base of the column, and we're nitpicking, but gosh, it really does look funny when those things aren't medium enough at the base.
Alright. Thanks, Sean. So the applicant is not here. But open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Closed public hearing. Have a motion?
Move to approve staff recommendation of 1404 Lillian. Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Can I ask a general question, Chair? Can I just ask a general question?
You sure can.
Not this here, but Ben Mosley reminded about the distance between you, the back of the house, to the structure. I have a 20-foot in my head. When is that applicable? Or when do we apply that?
For an outbuilding, is that the-
Yeah. Or a DADU.
The italicized portion of the design guidelines for DADU and outbuildings. It's not in the ordinance, but the italicize says that there should be a separation of 20 feet between the outbuilding and the back of the principal building. Is that what you're-
Right, but then some- but right now, we had a situation where it was eight foot.
On the consent agenda?
We just talked about it. Eight to 10 foot.
It's one of those things where there's rarely a reason someone can't meet eve height requirements, the ridge height requirements, the square footage requirements. But it's often difficult to meet that 20-foot. And so you have been much more lenient with that.
Okay.
So either a tree doesn't come down, or we had one where they were using an existing path that was already there. So there's been various reasons where you have allowed that.
That's sort of our italicize then, is the 20-foot.
Yes.
So we make a designation or a decision, you know, based on that particular project?
Based on the conditions of that size.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Election of officers. Do we have a nomination for Chair and Vice Chair? Start off with Chair.
I'm going to nominate Brian Tibbs as the Chairman.
Second.
Okay. Any others? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. We have a- do we have a nomination for Vice Chair?
I would nominate Rose Cantrell.
Second.
Okay. We have a- any other nominations for Vice Chair? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Did you-
Rose, you're now Vice Chair.
Thank God, there's a conspiracy out there.
Adoption revised rules.
This is fortunately a pretty simple one, I think. Chairman Tibbs recommended that the- now that you've been voted in without your knowledge as Vice Chair, Chair and Vice Chair serve for two years. It made sense to me because if you're a new person, new in that position, you often haven't really kind of gotten your feet until it's almost time for you to leave. So that's up for you to vote for today. Right now, it's one year. Again, this isn't your time serving on the board. This is just your time serving as the Chair and Vice Chair. So right now, it's one year, and if you'd like, we can change the rules and rules of order and procedure to be two years.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that way it can-
It really does make sense.
It can rotate around, and the Vice Chair can have some experience at it.
But I guess if you had an expiring term, that would mean the people that whose term expired in a year could not be eligible to fill either of those commissions. Is that what you're saying?
No, I think they would still be eligible. It's just you'd have to find someone else halfway through that term.
Okay. Any questions about that?
I move that we change the rules and procedures as so described.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
One other thing I wanted to bring to your attention. I know it's really late because it's next week, but if anyone can go to the NA PC conference in Mobile, we still do have a little bit of funding. We could probably pay for all or the vast majority of your expenses through our CLG grant and match. So if you want to head down to Mobile for the weekend, let me know. There's also a training opportunity coming up in Franklin, Tennessee. You have email with all the details on that, the date and so forth. That's $25. Oddly, we don't have the funding for that. The funding is earmarked specifically towards NA PC conference, so that's available to you as well. That's a full day, and I think that's geared mainly towards legal issues. Several of our staff will be attending, and I think at least one commissioner will be attending so far.
Is that the Mobile one?
That one's in Franklin.
It's worth $25 just to see the old old jail down there.
That's so true.
And as an architect, if you need some additional health safety welfare credits, you can also request those at that.
Alright, sounds good.
At the conference, yes.
Remind me when that one is.
That's next week. So it's mainly Thursday through Saturday.
The Franklin's.
The one that's leaving is 19.
Oh, it's NA PC conference is the one that offers the AIAF, AIP credits.
Okay.
I'm not sure about Franklin. Auto planning.
If nothing else, me and Sean.